Excuse our tardiness tonight, we had another meeting that ran over a little bit. Welcome to the Maryville Town Council meeting for September 28th. We'll record the time is starting at 6:35. Please stand for the invocation followed by a moment of silence. Do we have someone for the invocation tonight?
Esther Walton.
Oh. You're masked.
Let us bow our heads. Father, we thank you for our town council. We thank you for the sharp minds that you have given to govern and protect the city. We ask that you would give them the wisdom and the grace to be able to make decisions now for situations that we know we will face ahead. We pray that you would just bless this town, bless our offices, and strengthen every ward and every member, protect our families, protect our children and our schools. Be with us, Lord God, as we depend upon your hand of protection, your grace upon us. Bless this meeting. We thank you for the unity and for the grace that's appointed to succeed here in the town of Maryville. We ask these prayers in Jesus' name, and we all say it, amen.
Thank you. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Chief Cortino, would you lead us tonight in our pledge?
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk Treasurer, can you please call the roll?
Certainly. Councilman Spann.
Here.
Councilman Hardaway.
Here.
Councilman Minchuck.
Here.
Councilwoman Yuzelak.
Here.
Councilman White.
Here.
Councilman Pettit. Absent, and Councilman Bella.
Present.
Six present, one absent.
Thank you. Moving on tonight to deconsent agenda, we have the accounts payable voucher approval for September 28th and the approval of the town council meeting minutes for September 14th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion Mrs. Yuzelak, second amendment, Mr. White, for approval of the consent agenda as submitted. Questions or comments? Hearing not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to standing and special committee reports, budget and finance, Mr. Hardaway.
Krista?
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything you want to talk about with the ARP?
Only that I believe the committee is set to meet again next Wednesday at 3:00. And at that point, there are a few of the programs that the town is looking at for small business assistance and some home improvement assistance to the residents. Those programs will be discussed further and kind of flushed out some ideas. We will, at the next council meeting for the October 28th meeting, excuse me, October 12th meeting, need to do an additional appropriation for the ARP funds. We were originally given information that the resolution you passed already appropriating the money was sufficient, but during a discussion last week statewide with the State Board of Accounts, the DLGF is suggesting through the State Board to do an actual additional appropriation with the notice. So despite the fact that Maryville had a public hearing, asked for public comment, and then discussed everything in council meeting, it's probably safer to go ahead and do that process, which is fine. That will be on your next agenda then, just to have that in place. And there's some other programs to be watching for that I think the committee will get settled, which should be exciting for the residents, so.
And I want to encourage all of the councilmen and ladies to come out for the meeting next Wednesday, so we can have input from everyone as we make a decision as to how we want to set the standards for the residents and the businesses in the town. So I'd just like for everyone to come out for that, so that it'll be 100% us making the decision as opposed to just the committee. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Mr. Hardaway, did you want to make mention of the United Healthcare Insurance Plan?
I was going to do that under personnel.
Oh, very good, thank you. Moving on to council affairs, is a report for Mr. Pettit? No?
No, I don't have anything for him.
Public works, Mr. Minchuck.
Yes, I know I can repeat myself from last time, but as we all know, fall is coming. I haven't seen it just yet, but it should be coming, the town newsletter should be coming in the mail here soon, and the schedule for leaf pickup will be in there, so please pay attention to that. And that is all I have. I'm sorry, I do have a proposal from Steve that is currently under review, and I'll report later on that.
Thank you. Do we have anything to add to reelection, public relations, or town beautification, Mr. Pettit's committee?
No reports.
How coming, Mr. King, down there by entrance sign?
I talked to Eric Hubinger today, actually, he's got locates called in, that should be starting this week. There was some confusion about ownership of streetlights down there. We got that squared away today for locates, and he'll be starting that this week.
For the, for that sign coming in off of 61st?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Okay.
And thank you. Thank you, Steve, for the sign, Hendrick Street.
Oh, you're welcome.
Everybody on that block thanks you.
Good, you're welcome, thank you.
Mrs. Yuzelak, while you have the floor, how about a environmental affairs report?
Well, doing the environmental affairs, Indiana Department of Health has reported 27 more COVID deaths over this last weekend. So that goes to show you, it's still out there. And in Lake County alone, we had 16 that had passed away this past weekend. So we have a total of 14,805 Hoosiers that have passed away from COVID so far. So we have to really watch it, get our shots. The booster shot is out now. I guess you just have to call the hospitals to find out where you could get it from, because I really don't have a report on that.
211, March, dial 211.
Dial 211, thank you, Richard. I forgot about that 211. And there is a total of 55.2% of Indiana's population that has been vaccinated, and 53.2% out of Lake County, they are already vaccinated. So I hope everybody gets out there that didn't get their vaccination. And we will be talking on that further with our group on what we plan on doing in Maryville, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Rich.
Thank you. Personnel policy and employee benefits, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. We just had a meeting with Myers and Galeros, our insurance carriers, and we talked about insurance for 2022. And right now, it looks like we're going to stick with United Healthcare, which is a carrier that we've had for the last four years, with a minimal increase, and there's not going to be any increases to the employees. Everything's going to stay the same for the employees. And so at this time, Mr. President, we're looking at, if I'm not mistaken, 2.2 million for insurance. And so my motion is, is that we empower Myers and Galeros to go back to United Healthcare and say that we accept the terms of their agreement for 2022.
I'll second that motion.
Motion, Mr. Hardaway, with a second by Mr. Minchuck, to stay with United Healthcare, authorize Meyer Galeros to negotiate on our behalf not to exceed $2.2 million?
Yes.
Questions or comments on that motion? Mr. Hardaway, is this our single largest expense for the town?
Say that again.
Is this our single largest expense for the town of Maryville?
Yes.
Questions, comments? Hearing not Madam Clerk Treasurer, roll call, please, on this one.
Mr. Spann.
Yes.
Mr. Hardaway.
Yes.
Mr. Minchuck.
Yes.
Mrs. Yuzelak.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mr. Bella.
Yes.
All six in favor.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Public safety, Mr. Minchuck.
I have nothing at this time.
Okay. I have one thing, the infamous 53rd and Broadway stoplight. I've got two emails, one from Senator Milton and one from his assistant, and the problem, the delay is, is because they are waiting on boats, some type of specialized boat that they had to order, and they were supposed to take three weeks to get in, but that's been extended, so they're looking at within the next couple of weeks of the boats coming in, and as soon as they come in, everybody's saying that we're going to get the streetlights.
They may have to have a ribbon cutting out there or something. We may have to have a ribbon cutting out there.
I'm thinking about, we may, we're going to have a block party anyway. That's all I have there, thank you.
Thank you. Any report for economic development? Again, Mr. Pettit's committee? No? Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Yuzelak.
Yes, as I have reported before, all the parks have been rehabbed in Maryville, and they are looking great. I had a small park party on the Hendrick Street Park in Maryville a couple of weeks ago on the weekend, with the weather being so nice. And as Judge Velasco had stated, his park is completed in chapel manner, and he's seen a lot of children out there, too. So our parks are all in good shape, and everything's done with them so far.
Great, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Abandoned and blighted properties, Mr. Hardaway.
Oh, I continue to encourage us to, the vacant buildings, we're getting the increase in registrations now, we're starting to get in those $100 and $200 from businesses that need to be registered. And so I continue to encourage the council that if you see any vacant buildings or abandoned buildings, please let us know so that we can go out and find out who the owner is, so that we can get them to register those buildings, so that we can stay on top of it. The one thing that I continue to see is that on the weekends, people do a lot of work these days on the weekends, that, you know, roofs and repairing cars, and it looks like shaver preferred on Saturdays, when you go through some subdivisions where people got all kinds of cars jacked up. I rode through one subdivision on Saturday, guy had like 10 cars lined up, and he had two or three of them jacked up already with the hood up. So the problem there is that when they know that code enforcement's not out on Saturdays, that's when they do the majority of their work. And it's blighting the neighborhoods, because some of these are great, you know, relatively new subdivisions, but when you ride through and you see that the people are working on cars, and it's just, it's a eyesore. And I don't know how we fix it, but I think that's something we need to have a committee meeting or something on to figure out a remedy for it. We've got two code enforcement people now, not including Vicki, you know, we've got Tiffany and Michael, so there should be somebody out every, you know, eight hours a day riding through the town, and some of these you ought to be able to identify, because if you ride through and you see some guy that's got cars up on blocks, that means that he's doing something that he's waiting until Saturday to start up again. So I just, I encourage us to kind of like figure out what we need to do there, because it's not fair to the neighbors. You know, I wouldn't want anybody on my block working on cars. And I'm quite sure that the neighbors feel the same way in these other residential areas. They don't want people working on cars, but they probably don't know what to do. And I know that Vicki has done things in the past, and when you get there, the people say, oh, no, that's my cousin's car, or that's my grandmother's car, or whatever. Somehow we need to even track that to see exactly what's going on and start documenting it. And then if we have to go back to that same house two months from now, and it's still their grandmother, and the grandmother's got a new car now, we need to figure out what to do.
Mr. King, would you please get with Vicki after the meeting and share with her what you did to stagger shifts with scheduling to get Saturday coverage?
Absolutely.
Like you did for the birthday celebrations?
Yep. Yes, Mr.
There might be some easy solutions.
It is, but I just think that, you know, it don't have to be every Saturday.
Right.
I would say, I'd just maybe twice a month or something like that, and just so that we can just have some eyes out there to see exactly what's going on. And like I said, it's not only the automobile repair, but you know, you got people putting on roofs and all kinds of stuff that, you know, where they haven't pulled a permit. So they're, you know, circumbiting the system.
Sure. Mr. White?
Yes, I wanted to add to Councilman Hardaway's, adding a blank, here's what I want to say specifically about the nursing home on 61st. Getting way too many complaints, I walk around on the side of that building, you see all those teachers, well, specifically the parents that are parked there, and you look on both sides, on the east side of that building, you got the Fife Elementary School, on the west side of, you got a daycare center, you know, kids outside playing. So I know I've talked to the owner about it, Pat was supposed to find some, because he did put something on the table saying, hey, look, if I put X amount of dollars on it, would the town put another X amount of dollars on it so we can demolish it? So I really want to see that building done, because I've been talking about that building for quite some time, and we don't know what the end use is going to be. Again, Pat was supposed to talk to him, I think maybe Pat got, you know, had some problems and stuff, and we didn't get a chance to finish that up, but certainly, we need to start looking into that more closely. I think I talked to Sheila about it a couple of times, it just doesn't seem to be moving, that needle's sitting there just like this, it's not moving, never. So I did hear the principal was complaining about it as well. So kind of work with people in the community, we're not trying to harm them, but at the same time, that's a huge eyesore. Thank you.
Well, I guess I'm going to respond to that, Mr. White, and my response is, is that he's registered as a vacant building, he's paid his registration fee for that, and the people that's parking in that parking lot, are from the school, those are school teachers, that's who's parking there, and so I think if we start doing something there, then they're going to lose that parking spot, because he's going to just quarter that off, and they're not going to be able to park there. So I understand what you're saying, and I understand that your feelings on it, but as long as he keeps the grass cut, and he's addressed, as far as I know, with Vicki, he's went over there, he's replaced the plywood or whatever on the windows, he's doing everything that he's supposed to do to maintain the building. So I don't know what else we can do, Joe, to make him do anything other than, I rode past there the other day and the grass was cut.
Yeah.
That's about all we can do, make sure that the appearance of it is kept up. I don't know. You tell me what else we can do.
I think if he wants to demolish that building, we need to help him. And then, I don't know what he wants to do from there, but that was my last conversation I had with him, he wants to demolish it. I mean, again.
We don't really quite have the funds for that, and we have other developers that would probably love to hear that we're spending money to help demolish buildings and raise buildings for new developments.
We can't do that.
It's a slippery slope, I think, that we need to.
I know, but we have to do something. I mean, we had to come up with some kind of solution, and we can't say we don't have money for certain things and have money for other things. So I think one of the things that Pat had talked about was going to Tim Brown to see if they had any dollars on any RDA. Also, I had talked, actually, I ran into Commissioner Allen last night, and, you know, kind of expressed some of my concerns that, you know, wanting to kind of, you know, see if the county has any dollars. So I'm trying to work this thing out. At the end of the day, if you can keep the grass cut, but what is you going to do with that building? Because the building has.
Would you mind reaching out to Tim Brown and seeing if there are any possibilities?
Sure, absolutely, that's my next assignment, I'll do that, and then I'll come back and tell you about the conversation him and I had.
That'd be great.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Leonard.
That's all I got, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hardaway. Dean and Barbara White, Community Center, Mr. Minchuck.
Yes, sir. We have a meeting tomorrow at 3:30, the whole council is invited. Regional, I might mess this up, Northern Regional Pop Warner has reached out to us and inquired of using our Community Center football field for their state championship. Also, the Midwest Regional Pop Warner, who does this whole section of the country, is also talking about having their regional championships at our field as well. So we're going to sit down with them, kind of go over the details, we may have to make a few alter, excuse me, a few altercation, or altercations. It's been one of those days, right? We may have to make a few changes, let's just go with that. We might have to make a few changes to help fit their needs, but we'll overall that tomorrow at the meeting.
At what time is it, Joe?
3:30.
3:30, okay.
Where at?
At the Community Center.
Okay.
Anything else?
That is all for now.
I've got two things.
Mr. Hardaway.
The first thing I got is that I should have done it under personnel, but I'd like to introduce our new Assistant Parks Director, Mr. Terrence Price.
Welcome, Terrence. All right.
Secondly, I got a letter from Ryan Smiley from Boys and Girls Club, and it says, Mr. Hardaway, Boys and Girls Club of Greater Northwest Indiana's Christmas to Remember Program and Events brings together over 500 club members from tennis clubs and communities across Lake and Porter Counties on one special night. Members get to meet Santa, decorate cookies, eat dinner, and meet local law enforcement heroes. Each child receives $125 worth of gifts that have been hand-selected for them from their Dear Santa wish lists. This event brings together over 50 volunteers and several corporate sponsors on the night of the event to make this truly a Christmas to remember for club kids that are in need, that need it the most. Boys and Girls Club are requesting the use of the Dean and Barbara White Family Foundation Community Center in Maryville to host this event on Thursday, December 9th, and have agreed to pay the discounted rate as offered by staff. In addition, the club staff and volunteers are requesting additionally the use of various rooms and program space the day before to prepare and stage for the event. While some of this may cause a slight disruption in the already scheduled programs, the Community Center will still remain open to the public, and we believe that this venue is the perfect location to host this important community event. And so what he was, what he alluded to was that he spoke to somebody down at the Community Center today, I guess, and they were difficult to get along with as far as, you know, helping them say that, okay, you can use everything that you need for this one thing. I don't know if you're aware of that, Terrence, so, but we'll have another conversation about it, but this was his request, and they're willing to pay, so they're not asking us for anything. So I just think that it's one day, and December 8th is when they need to probably bring in all the gifts and all of that, they got to have someplace to store. You know, you got 500 kids, that's a lot of gifts. 125 bucks worth of gifts, it's a lot.
Sure. I'm going to assume they talked to Barb, I would think.
Well, I don't know, I don't know who he talked to, but, no, because Barb was okay. It was somebody else that he talked to that said, absolutely not, that we're not going to give, we won't do anything, we won't make a concession for December 8th.
Well, let's find out more about it.
Okay. So that's it.
We could discuss it further at the meeting tomorrow if you'd like.
Thank you, I'll be there.
Absolutely. Terrence, you're more than welcome to, I didn't know you were here, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Any report tonight on special projects, Richard?
I think I've already said enough.
There isn't a word limit, you're not limited, as long as it's pertinent. Moving on tonight to department and commission reports, Lake County Solid Waste Management District, Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. President. We absolutely had a great Zoom meeting on September 23rd.
Go ahead.
Okay. On September 23rd, we did have a quorum, we hadn't had a quorum for a couple of months. 17 out of the 27 board members were there, and one of the subjects where we talked about was, of course, the leaf collection programs for unincorporated areas of Lake County, Center Township, Shererville Township, Union Township, and other, Calumet Township, and other townships that don't have regular leaf pickup. So we also approved a contract for $40,000 for leaf grinding at the Geary compost facility, which I had some concerns about leaf grinding. My whole situation with having my background in compost, and we tried to biologically decompose of leaves instead of just crunching them up, and they're still there, but hadn't had a chance to get out there and look at it, but went ahead and agreed to approve on that $40,000 to, because that's what they said their needs was. Also, I want to talk about Project LW. That project, basically, City of Hammond has allowed the Lake County Solid Waste District to use their building on Calumet Avenue for the past 15 or 20 years, now they want it back. They're saying that we're going to put something there different, we're going to knock that building down, possibly put a fire station there, so they want that building back. So under the Project LW, they want to buy a building, and I said, come on home to Maryville, this is where you started it. So they said they had half a million dollars that they wanted to put out for a 20,000, I'm sorry, 12,000 cubic foot building, no, square foot building, and that they had other criteria that we're going to go look at on Monday, I'm part of that committee to find it, and it's really close down here on our end, South End and Broadway. And additionally, with that said, I think they're looking at topping that out like at $1.2 million that they want to invest in either buying a building, I don't think they want a lease, I think Joe did give me an option, saying that we have a piece of property, I'm going to put that on the table, Joe.
The property at 73rd, Catty Quarter from the old mill, is for sale by the town.
Yeah, I'm going to put that on and see if that might be a feasible thing. Last but not least, the, over the 20 year, maybe 25 years, the county's been paying on the Hickory Hills lawsuit, I think we got sued for $60 million back in the day, and then we sold, you know, it's not even funny, because here's the thing, those dollars we've been paying for the past 25 years could have been spread out even to me among the cities and towns and stuff, so we would have been getting a little bit more money. So we're going to get two more payments of approximately $300,000, and it's supposed to tie this thing up in the end of 2026. So that's my report.
Thank you. Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, Mr. Hardaway.
We met, Mr. President, but there's nothing earth-shattering came out of it, no report.
Stormwater management, Mr. Lake.
I don't have much other than, I'm going to be sending you guys an email, just to meet with you individually with regards to ARP funding, go over projects, and in relation to that, I'm going to be sending an application to Little Cal for the tini ditch crossings, engineering's done on that, so I think we get maybe 50% kosher on that, but maybe that could be one of the projects, too, in Marge's Ward, you know, to look at. So I got ideas, but I want to collaborate with you guys, so we are on the same page as to how to allocate the funds, so.
Thank you. Other department managers? Vicki?
Nothing to report.
Chief Cortino?
Excuse me, Mr. President. I just wanted Vicki to kind of update us on our conversation we had with our neighbor that basically is always calling her name. So would you like to, please, Vicki, tell them about our meeting at her house?
We met with Q, and everything that she wanted done has been done, so, but I think it kind of maybe made her not dislike the department so much, meeting with her out there. We'll see what happens, but everything that she was complaining about has been done.
Yes, and that's what we tried to tell them, Mr. President, that, you know, point out what we haven't done. I do know that Tiffany and Mike have been over there towing a lot of vehicles that have been sitting around, and also, you got a lot of vehicles that have covers over them, which tells you basically, hmm, those plates might be expired on those vehicles. So, yeah, I just wanted to bring that conversation up that we had. Thank you, Vicki.
Thank you. Chief?
Yes, I just want to share some excellent news that.
Uh, yes, uh, I just wanna share some excellent news that I received yesterday. I spoke with our animal control officer, Barb, and she, uh, got a thumbs up, and she'll be returning back to work Friday.
Oh.
And I also would like to give a thanks to Kelly, our second, uh, animal control, who stepped in and doing a fantastic job. And I also would like to thank the, uh, Gary Police Animal Control for assisting us in our time of need. That's all I have, sir.
Chief, are we gonna keep Kelly?
Yes. Hopefully, we can make it full-time, but for right now, uh, the council allowed me to keep him part-time this year.
Mr. President?
Good news. Mr. White?
Yeah, I just wanted to say this to Chief, uh, we, we did have a large gathering, uh, this past weekend. Uh, it was a really nice, I think, for Maryville. Um, Maryville Police, they really did a great job, and I, I thank you for that and half of your guys out there. Uh, even though it was a little older crowd, I thought I was in a senior citizen moment there. I felt good by my, you know, not by myself in the senior moments, and I just wanted to say, uh, Maryville, proud. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, sir.
Okay.
Any report for you, Sheila?
No report this evening.
Terrence, you've been with the town forty-eight hours. What do you think?
It's the extract.
Well, welcome again. Glad you're here.
Back tomorrow.
Oh, good, that's good news. All right. Moving on tonight to, uh, general orders, we have a first reading ordinance, twenty-one dash twenty-four. It's an ordinance of the town of Maryville providing the zoning ordinance, uh, to be amended by changing the established R-five multi-density, multi-family residential zoning district classification and a C-three highway commercial zoning district classification to a planned unit development classification. I see Attorney Anderson is with us tonight.
Yes, Richard Anderson, ninety-two eleven Broadway, Maryville, Indiana. Mr. Don Weiss, the developer, is also here. Randy Peterson is the engineer, and Bob Billick is the vice president of Weiss, uh, entities. Uh, basically, as you said, this is now the conversion of the old Wise Way Store at Ninety-third and Broadway. We'll tear that down, tear down the buildings that are next to it. It'll also expand out to Ninety-third. The townhouses would be on Ninety-third. The apartments would, the upscale apartments would be, uh, in the area of the parking lot and where the building now exists for the supermarket. There'd be three hundred and twenty units. The goal is to try to do some demolition either late this fall or into the winter, and then start building in the spring. You've been kind of involved in this project because of the TIF that was approved earlier. Uh, the plan is pretty much the same as what you've seen. I will say that the town staff and all this, uh, town employees have been very helpful in pushing this forward, and unfortunately, I've been pushing hard, and, and they've been responding, uh, very, very well. I really appreciate all of that, and I have to say that because I, I unfortunately was pushing. But this is the, this is Ninety-third, this is Taft, and you can see there's a upscale clubhouse. It'll be a really nice project, nice addition. Cars will park underneath, so it'll be a kind of a new design that you're starting to see where the cars are under, uh, the apartments and the apartments are above them. And any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Sheila, is this the final step in approving this PUD so they can move forward?
Yes.
Okay. I know we've seen this kinda over and over in various terms, various times. Okay.
I had a question for.
Mr. White.
Now, uh, is this a TIF district or a tax abatement situation? I misunderstood. I thought last time we said it was a tax abatement.
No, this is a TIF district where the money from the taxes that are paid for this area is used to pay for some of the public-type improvements that are specified in the TIF.
And that particular TIF district just encompassed that?
Basically, this, just what you're seeing.
That, that whole project?
Yeah, it doesn't expand outside of that.
Okay, thank you. No more questions.
Mr. President, just to let you know, myself and counsel, Miss Yuzlak, I've been following this project for quite some time with the Plan Commission. We went through it in detail, and I think every inch of this thing is a great project, and I'm very happy with it, and I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-one twenty-four.
Second.
And I have a comment. Everybody on the Plan Commission approved it, and they were ecstatic about this new development, including myself. You did a good job, Richard.
Thank you.
And Mr. Weiss.
We have a.
Okay, thank you.
We have a.
Yes, it's going to look really great.
A motion by Mr. Minchek with a second. Chair will recognize Mrs. Yuzlak as the second for approval of ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-four on first reading. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, Treasurer, roll call, please.
Mrs. Span?
Yes.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yes.
Mr. Minchek?
Yes.
Mrs. Yuzlak?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Bella?
Yes. Six in favor, or motion carries?
Thank you very much. Would it be possible to suspend the rules and have a reading on second?
Give me a second. I think, uh, do we have to have all members present or just present tonight?
Just present tonight, but you have to have a unanimous vote to suspend.
Right. Um, it is something that's possible, so I would entertain a motion. Mr. Minchek?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the minutes and proceed with the second reading, please.
Suspend the rules, right?
I'm sorry, rules.
I will, I will second that motion on suspension of the rules.
I need to go home.
Thank you. A motion by Mr. Minchek, second by Mrs. Yuzlak, to suspend the rules tonight to read ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-four on second and final reading. Questions or comments on the motion to suspend? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Span?
Yes.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yep.
Mr. Minchek?
Yes.
Mrs. Yuzlak?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Bella?
Yes. Six in favor, or motion carries?
Thank you very much. Would it be possible to suspend the rules and have a reading on second?
Give me a second. I think, uh, do we have to have all members present or just present tonight?
Just present tonight, but you have to have a unanimous vote to suspend.
Right. Um, it is something that's possible, so I would entertain a motion. Mr. Minchek?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the minutes and proceed with the second reading, please.
Suspend the rules, right?
I'm sorry, rules.
I will, I will second that motion on suspension of the rules.
I need to go home.
Thank you. A motion by Mr. Minchek, second by Mrs. Yuzlak, to suspend the rules tonight to read ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-four on second and final reading tonight. Is there a motion by the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Minchek, Chair will recognize Mr. White as the second this time for second reading of ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-four. Questions from the council? Hearing none, is there any public comment tonight on ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-four? Is there any public comment? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, Treasurer, roll call.
Sure. Mrs. Span?
Yes.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yes.
Mr. Minchek?
Yes.
Mrs. Yuzlak?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Bella?
Yes.
All six in favor?
Thank you very much. I think Mr. Weiss would like to say just a couple words.
Motion carries.
First of all, let me express, uh, my great gratitude for the confidence you, you have in our project and, uh, continued efforts of our, our company. I wanna compliment the staff as to how well they work with us and the various committees and the council in total, but I'm particularly proud, after you enter your second fifty years, to be part of what can only be called a boomtown. So, the many, many positive things that are going on at this town, uh, at the leadership of the council and the executive staff of the, of the town, from, uh, the community center to the Amazon facility, I'm sorry, don't know the names of all the distribution facilities and manufacturing facilities. This is a very major development that we're doing. There's a building, for example, in Munster, there's a building, a nice building that's going up, that's townhomes, and it's this type of construction of our, of our apartments. It will be thirty-two townhomes, okay, with this three-over-one. We're gonna have two hundred and forty here apartments, uh, and then townhomes for rentals with the same stuff, uh, the same parking arrangement, actually better, too. It's not available anywhere in Lake and Porter County, and I'd like to compliment you on your wisdom in leveraging the growth, not only in Maryville, but in surrounding areas that have not had the same broad-mindedness of the diversity of, of housing and recognizing the great impact that can come from luxury apartments. So, so that many of the people that will work in the new hospitals and other things that are coming in other communities will be living in Maryville because of your foresight. So, I'm highly excited about this, very thankful, and, uh, looking forward to our next fifty years in Maryville.
Great. We're glad you're here, Don.
Me, too.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you, Don.
Tonight, also on second reading, we have ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-five. It's an ordinance for appropriations and tax rates for the year ending in twenty-twenty-two. Madam Clerk, Treasurer, and Trista, can you assist us with this?
Most importantly, um, Mr. President, I apologize, but it's the first reading, which for the budget is important for the minutes.
I, did I say second? If first reading, let the records.
Thank you.
Be corrected. I'm sorry. First reading of this ordinance.
Uh, Council, what you have before you is the ordinance for the twenty-twenty-two budget. As you are well aware, during the various budget meetings that have been held, uh, there are a few matters to still discuss before you come to a vote in a few weeks. Um, I'm not sure, Mr. President, how much detail you'd like explained for today's purpose, but I will simply remind that it is also a public hearing tonight as well.
Well, with that in mind, then, let's have a, a little detail, please.
Sure. The town, uh, uses tax levy, property tax levy for a few funds. The general fund, um, the police pension fund in small parts, the cumulative capital development, which is kind of separate, but yet that is a rate as well, and then part of the fire, um, protection territory receives, uh, tax levy, uh, as well directly to them. The other group of funds that receive property tax levy are the bonds, the various bonds that you have, and all of those funds that receive property tax levy then are proportioned to receive various amounts of, of property tax levy. The remainder of the town's funds that you use and the remainder of your budget are supported solely by miscellaneous revenues that are collected, some from the state, but most, uh, of them are local revenues of some kind, either by fees or, um, other, other revenues that are paid to them. The largest of the funds, of course, is the town's general fund, pays for the majority of the operating expenses. There are several departments that have secondary funds, non-reverting funds, that they use fees that are collected to help pay for some of their expenses, uh, but the general fund is the major fund, of course, that the town council uses. As the council knows, during budget committee, uh, meetings, the department heads were asked for which wishlist items of things that they would like included in their budget. Those are all included in this advertisement, because the advertised budget can be higher than what will actually be adopted, but it cannot be increased, and so it's safer and smarter to have a higher budget today's meeting to then work your way down for the adoption vote. Currently is listed about three million dollars higher than could be sustained, and so the budget committee will need to, uh, continue at the drawing board to decide which wishlist items are not able to be obtained this year, and that will occur, those discussions, over the next two weeks. The bond funds right now are advertised a little bit high as well, again, so that adjustments can be made as the official AV is announced in the budget order that the DLGF will put out in December, and it is fully expected that the tax rate on those bonds then will be levelized, uh, with this year's rate, which is the council's wish. That may not look levelized on, again, this advertisement, but that's on purpose, and that will be addressed through the process. Uh, the fire department and the stormwater, uh, department, through their own taxes and fees are able to, and their boards, are able to, uh, propose their budgets. They are listed in your ordinance as those boards have, uh, requested and suggested. And with that, I think I will simply leave it to any questions that anyone has.
So, is this eleven-point-eight figure our total of what we're gonna advertise?
The eleven-point-eight figure is for the secondary non-reverting funds.
Okay.
The page prior to that shows, uh, a current advertised budget at twenty-three-point-nine million, almost twenty-four.
Okay.
The general fund is included in that, almost twenty-four million, and that is the one that is advertised very much higher than could be supported right now.
That's a twelve-point-three?
Correct. The general fund does receive a, just over about two million dollars in miscellaneous revenue, so that puts you over nine for revenues to expect to the general fund.
Thank you, Trista. Questions from the council?
I, I do have a question, Mr. President. Um, I just need some clarification on the Maryville Road TIF project is, we're paying sixteen-hundred-and-fifteen, I'm sorry, six-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars, and I just wanted to know what was the project actually on Maryville Road?
Well, the fund that you see there, the ninety-five forty-one fund number, the Maryville Road TIF project, isn't specifically the road itself, it's the area, the TIF area that encompasses Maryville Road, right? You've seen the maps there. Each of the TIF districts have a budget that they work through during the course of any calendar year. Uh, the RDC typically sets their budget or, um, sets goals that they have for, for different projects to complete within their, that TIF area, and this is simply a rough figure, uh, from Mr. Swince that we have included on behalf of the RDC.
So, that's anticipated revenue?
Supported by revenue, yes. Yes. There is no, uh, property tax that is added to that. It's all.
Okay, uh, thank you for that clarification. Additionally, uh, in the terms of the, uh, what do I wanna say, the Westlake project, is there a line item, uh, that we send, uh, our contribution? Um, I just wanted to know what the line item was that we were, uh, paying to the, the Westlake project?
I believe you're referring to the agreement, um, for the South Shore track?
Yes.
Uh, it's still at the agreed amount, the twenty-two percent that was agreed and contracted with years back.
Yeah, but I was asking, what, what fund does it actually come out of, actually?
Well, it comes out of the seat at revenues.
Okay.
So, the, the local income tax revenues, a portion of those are assigned under the seat at, the Community Economic Development Income Tax. That twenty-two percent is held by the county first before Maryville receives their actual seat at revenues.
So, it's inter, it's basically intercepted before?
Yeah, we never see that money.
Okay. Yeah, I just never, I just didn't see it, you know, specific on the, the actual budget. So, now that, when you said it was out of the seat at funds.
The town uses the seat at funds and deposits it directly into the general fund. It's a, a transfer over, and so that is part of the revenue that the general fund receives. It doesn't have its own budgetary fund, or revenues are expensed separately.
Okay, thank you. No more questions, Mr. President.
Any other questions or comments? Kelly, you here to speak to this?
Nope. She did a good job.
It was your pleasure, Council, on ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-five on first reading tonight.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Yuzlak, only 'cause you were slow, Leonard. Would you like to make the second?
Can I say it real slowly? I second.
And a second by Mr. White for approval of ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-five on first reading. This is our ordinance for appropriations and tax rates for the year ending in twenty-twenty-two, and do we need public comment tonight also? We do. Is there any other questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. Is there any public comment tonight on our, uh, our resolution for appropriations of taxes? Is there any public comment? The records show there's no public comment. Back to the council, any questions? On first reading, we'll still do a roll call. It's ordinance, thank you. First reading, I said it several times, this is first reading.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Bella?
Yes. Six ayes, motion carries. So this will be on our next council meeting, then?
Yes, sir.
Thank you all. Moving on tonight to resolutions, we have a resolution with the town of Maryville concerning the holiday pay for the calendar year of twenty-twenty-two. And the way I understand it, this is simply a correction. We had this listed wrong in previous documents. The day, um, that we get off for Thanksgiving is the day after Thanksgiving, and that's highlighted on your resolution.
Motion to approve twenty-one dash sixty-one, as amended.
Thank you, Mr. White. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Span. Any questions or comments on the resolution? It's really just housekeeping. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And motion carries. Moving on to resolution twenty-one dash sixty-four. This is a transfer of funds resolution, two-thousand-dollar decrease in the general and travel expense fund, and a two-thousand-dollar increase in the general and postage fund. That effect is zero.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway with a second by Mrs. Yuzlak for approval of this transfer of funds, resolution twenty-one dash sixty-four. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. Moving on to resolution twenty-one dash sixty-six, it's also a transfer of funds, decreases sixty-five thousand dollars in various funds in the town admin, HR Director, Admin Secretary, Economic Development Director, excuse me, um, Social Security and other office supplies, and the increases are to the right side there, the same amounts, and that effect, again, is zero.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, second by Mr. Span for approval of resolution twenty-one dash sixty-six. This one's a little more involved, anything to add, Trista, before we vote?
It simply finalizes the rest of twenty-twenty-one for the development of the Human Resource Department and the Economic Development Department. Certainly those, uh, employees in those positions, positions need to be paid, and so this takes care of that. You'll see that the transfer comes out of the town admin line, uh, that is in the bottom of the budget, set aside for circumstances such as this, when the council wishes to make changes throughout the year. The salary amounts listed are those that are needed to get to the end of the year, uh, there's nothing extra included there, and then you'll notice, uh, a small portion for office supplies, so that they are responsible for their own supplies within their departments. Going into twenty-twenty-two's budget, as you've seen, they are, will have their own department, as we did with engineering and code enforcement, again, to be able to identify and track their expenses individually.
We have to tell Pat this is what happens when you skip a meeting. We take it from your budget. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Trista. VZA and large gathering actions, I see none on the agenda, I'm assuming that's correct?
That is correct, Mr. President.
Old business, is there any bold, old business tonight before us? Hearing none, new business. We have on the agenda Halloween trick-or-treat, I'm assuming that's ours. We want to discuss that and make a motion tonight, so homeowners know what we're doing?
I'm not saying a word.
Nor am I.
You want a counsel? Halloween?
This was a sore subject with me last year.
Yeah.
No, what do we usually do, Mr. President?
It's on the agenda, and, yeah, everything is different now, so...
Five to seven, is that what we usually do? I think something like that?
Five to seven, four-thirty to six-thirty, I've seen it a couple different ways.
Let's go, uh, let's go four-thirty to seven-thirty, that gives them an extra hour this year, get some more candy.
Stock up on your candy.
I don't know it gets dark so early. Do you want the kids out there?
It's the best part of Halloween.
Be out there anyway.
It's dark at four-thirty in October thirty-first.
A lot of them are young kids, they go to bed early. How, how did we do it before, Rick?
Is it two hours or three hours?
It was normally, it was normally two hours.
It was always two hours.
Okay, then we'll just go...
Yeah. Probably like five to seven, something like that.
That's fine. That's what we're discussing, guys, whatever you'd like to do this year.
Well, whatever they want. Whatever the kids want.
Let's go five to seven if they go out an hour early, so...
What time, Jeff?
Five to seven, I think it's the same.
Yeah, five to seven, sounds good.
So, Mr. Minchek, is that actually a motion?
I would like to make a motion, Mr. President, that Halloween trick-or-treating will be from five to seven. If you want to come out early, that's great, too.
I will second that motion on five to seven, Halloween night. And I think everybody should put their lights on.
If, if you're, if you want trick-or-treaters, lights go on, right, right.
Right, we used to have a police car driving around, too, so I don't know, what do you think, Chief?
They'll be out.
Okay.
Uh, normally EMA assisted with that, too, right, Chief?
That's correct.
And all, every year, I know, Police Department's always out, uh, EMA, I think the Fire Department even takes the trucks out for, right on this sort of vision.
Right.
Any other discussion?
Call for the vote, please, sir.
We have a call for the vote. Madam Clerk, Treasurer, roll call, please, on this important item. Trick-or-treating hours, five to seven on Halloween night, October thirty-first, in the town of Maryville. Trick-or-treaters are welcome if your porch light is on, if you have a dark house, trick-or-treaters aren't welcomed. Madam Clerk, Treasurer.
Mr. Span?
Yes.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yeah.
Mr. Minchek?
Yes.
Mrs. Yuzlak?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. White?
Yes.
And Mr. Bella?
Yes.
No smart comment?
Kind of choked you up a little bit.
Six, six-zero, motion carries. That completes trick-or-treating. Uh, moving on to public comment, is there any public comment this evening? Please approach the podium and... No public comment, sir?
Can the council?
See, I waited, and we got a speaker, that's good. Welcome, sir.
Hello. My name is Larry Daniel, I live at twelve-ten West Fifty-seventh Avenue, and somebody was out today measuring the driveways, and I just wasn't informed on what was going on. So I'd like to know what is going on on Fifty-seventh Avenue.
Mr. King, something going on on Fifty-seventh Avenue?
Yeah, that's the, the paving.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so they're going to pave that, and if they were measuring your apron, that means that they're going to replace it, that's all.
Go ahead, Ted.
Is that right, Mr. King?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. Good news.
So you're going to get a new apron and new pavement?
And a new street. You got it.
It's, it's on the way.
And no extra charge to you, sir?
Been waiting.
Not directly. Any other public comment?
Can council, Mr. President, can council members do anything on the public comment?
Uh, that's quite unusual, Mr. White. If you have a comment, please, enlighten us.
No, I just wanted to make a, just wanted to make a statement, uh...
Oh, well, go ahead.
During the radio interview last week on the, um, National Public Radio, they, they basically had a question I could not answer, which is rare. Uh, they wanted to know what was going on...
Got jokes tonight, huh? Got jokes? Let us get jokes.
They wanted to know what was going on with the Radisson, I had no idea, I said, it's not, it's not on my, my, old Radisson properties. He says, well, you know, this property is really prime property, so, um, are we going to discuss? Uh, because I know we had talked to... Or is that none of our business, is that like a private N and T situation?
Owner... We really don't know what's going on.
The current owners right now are looking at different options with the property, but nothing concrete at this time, so...
Okay, so I, I'll make sure I tell, uh, Chris Notee, uh, that the owners were looking at something, but nothing in concrete, uh, as well as the, uh, the Burlington Coal Factory,